And you are ready.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. We'll call the second half of the Anchorage School District's School Board's Governance Committee to order. Today is Thursday, December 12th, 2024, here in the boardroom at 1:33 PM. We will go around the room and do introductions, starting here at the table. Member Chair, Robert Crow Jacobs, am I right?
Pat Higgins, school board member and member of the committee.
And the column and board them.
Kelly Lefferts, board member.
Katie Grant, executive assistant.
Kirsten Johnson, Strumler, Governor Chief of Schools.
Martin Ryan, Chief of HR.
Jim Anderson, Chief of Operations.
Chair, right, superwoman.
And we'll start with our back row here.
Corey Young, Assistant Director of Communications.
Corey H, hey, hey, President.
Katie Paris, Senior Director of Management and.
Great. Welcome all.
And then do you want the online?
No, yes, please.
Uh, we have Mr. Gustafson online, America Sullivan online, and Mr. Jacobson.
Great. Welcome all. If any new board, additional board members, Miss Grant popped in online, please let me know. Um, I wanted a special thank you to President Holland for chairing the first half of governance today. Wasn't available, so appreciate that. We've called ourselves to order. We've conducted a roll call. Move on to B1, which is a discussion of rightsizing amendments. Um, in lieu of a formal communications meeting, uh, this month, I asked the Chair of Communications, Member Wilson, to allow some additional time for discussion on potential amendments to the rightsizing initiative and memorandum proposed by district administration. And so we want to provide space for any conversation, questions, or discussion for administration ahead of our work session, which occurs next on the 17th, this upcoming Tuesday. Um, with that said, I believe in front of members available online on multiple different agendas is an amendment to the memorandum uh, I drafted, which I think has been well covered and discussed. Certainly I'm available to answer any questions on that. Um, if there are other members who wish to either propose or discuss conceptual or actually written amendments, uh, now would be a great time. And if there are members who'd have questions for administration, I think this would also be appropriate at this time. So open the floor there. Member Higgins, I see a hand half raised.
Yeah, uh, two things. Uh, for the agenda for the future, but I, uh, want to include a, a discussion about policy limiting access of, of, uh, school board members to talk to staff. Uh, that was surprising to me, but that's an issue we need to, I think, need to discuss. And, uh, bring that up. And then the other one I really want to do it right now, we need to talk about the audit process of what audits we're going to do and timing of that so that we get that moving along, uh, at some point as well.
Sure. Happy to talk about with you those, uh, with you about those things offline. Uh, we'll go back to our agenda, which is a discussion of rightsizing amendments, questions, um, and otherwise. Is there a member who wishes to ask a question, discuss an amendment, address a, a question or a point regarding an amendment that's already been raised? Member Lefferts.
So I have, um, I don't know, a number of potential amendments. And since this is up currently, um, one of the areas that I think, um, could be strengthened is if really were, we think about how we can use the FY26 budgeting process to best support staff and students going through transitions. Um, so one thing I would conceptually be interested in, in amending in, in this area, maybe adding bullet point, a couple of bullet points at the top, would be to allocate funding, um, as needed to provide district level support for the, the closing and receiving principals and staff, um, sort of immediately following passage of memo 73 and through some point in time, you know, I don't know, the first quarter or so of the school year, uh, just knowing that there are a great deal of, when I visit schools, there are areas that are filled with books, you know, boxes of materials, and there's just a lot of work that's going to be required to move people and things. And I thought there's, there's just such a large scale at this point that it may be useful to budget appropriately in the FY26 budget to support that sort of transition work. Um, a second sort of bullet point that I, I think I'd be interested in proposing is that, um, we don't know how the FY26 budget is going to be balanced. It's very likely it could involve PTR increases, right, to help mitigate our deficit. I would be interested in essentially holding receiving schools harmless, basically keeping them at, um, the, uh, the PTR levels responding to their increased enrollment, but FY25 PTR levels, because we've talked about staff following the students. And that's not going to happen if we have PTR increases that are, I'll just say through the roof. So I, yeah.
The one thing we would have to look at to see if we could do it is the disparity test.
Okay.
If we fail the disparity test, um, and what, Katie, do you remember the percentage that you can be off from the lowest funded school to the highest? I, I think, I want to say it's like 25% off. So if it, they were to throw off the disparity test of schools against schools, like you would have a non-Title I school making 25% or more, or budgeted more than a Title I school, then you would fail that Title I disparity test. And I think we, we'd have to, we'd have to look at that.
Okay.
To see if it's even, to see if it's possible, or if there's some like middle ground to where you don't fail the disparity test.
Okay. I think if the point is, I'd like to make sure that those students and who are going to be going through the move, that their family and the educators are just somehow supported as best as we can. And to me, maintaining no less than this year's PTR levels, uh, would be a way to do so. Um, and can also consider allowing, uh, creating sort of voluntary addenda to, for the staff who are moved from building A to building B, um, to settle into their new building, um, maybe to participate.
Do that.
Okay, so, so that's.
We've always done that when we close a school. There's a major Mount Spur, not only on.
Okay, so there's voluntary, there's agenda available to support that process. Um, great. And then just, it seems like it might be useful to create either some kind of an after action report. I mean, in the way, you, we sort of received that, uh, with respect to the out of loop students, but you know, if sometime like at the end of, by the end of September of 2025, um, that seems like that might be a useful, um, might be useful to the board, um, to have a general understanding of what went well, what, what were challenges and, um, like should there need to be additional consolidations in the future, uh, it would be a, a place to reflect and learn. Um, so that, those are some conceptual, maybe additions to Member Jacob's amendment. Um, and maybe they can just sort of be combined ahead of time since it hasn't formally been, so we wouldn't need to amend an amendment.
Right.
Um, there's another bullet point maybe to add at the end of this, which would essentially, I guess this is directing the administration to um, work with any charter EPC, which accepts placement in a district facility, to really create a plan to align its enrollment levels to what the building is capable of doing. So, you know, if, if a charter currently has an enrollment cap of, you know, X amount, but moves into a building with Y amount, let's make sure we support that APC in letting them grow into that facility. So they don't just have a bigger facility, but we are offering more students the opportunity to take advantage of that facility. And do so in a way that would be aligned with the board's adopted guardrail. Uh, so these are things that I have written out. Um, I did just, um, yeah, so and we can continue to have these conversations. But those are a couple of potential amendments to Member Jacob's preliminary, uh, cut at it.
Yeah. Um, so as Chair, I'll just put myself in the queue to, to address some of the conceptual, um, proposals before. And I, I think by and large, I, I don't, um, disagree with much that was proposed. I, I think it might be helpful for the board to be reminded of what the process, the process that occurred at Evanbrook Elementary and the, um, heroic effort put on by district staff to make those students feel welcome to receiving schools. Cause I think there's probably, um, it's been some times as the board was made aware of how hard the district worked to make those students feel welcome and the process we would use, um, this year. And I think that might address some questions. Uh, I don't know what the feasibility is of holding any particular school, uh, harmless and how that would change, um, impacts at another neighborhood school. And so I'm definitely interested in more information as to what that might look like. Um, I don't know that I'll be able to incorporate that into this particular amendment, but I do think it's a, a conversation we can continue to have as we proceed with our operating budget conversation, which of course will extend months beyond, uh, this particular conversation. Um, with that said, um, I, I, I do see, um, synergy between, um, the proposal discussed about, um, expanding charter and particular programs enrollment cap. Um, as a part of this process, I think that there's a, a larger conversation that should be had, which I think was alluded to at our Saturday work session by Member Domley, which is, um, you know, as we move charter programs into an ASD facility, um, that's, I think, a query and kind of built a template potentially, um, we need to talk about what it looks like to begin caring for those buildings for our bond proposition process, um, while also addressing and ensuring equity and access through things like transportation, meal service. Transportation for me was a hard stop, recognizing that this train leaves a station, so to speak, regards to transportation once, um, this, this proposal passes. Um, and so I wanted to include it, um, at this juncture to make sure it was, um, considered early and often by staff, as well as the charter program seeking potentially a place in a, in a school and a space made available through the rightsizing initiative. Um, but I am interested in addressing the guardrail through increased enrollment caps, as well as through seeing these buildings that have, uh, potentially may have access to a space that have a kitchen, for example, begin to utilize that to provide meal service in a program that doesn't have it otherwise. So I think it's, it's the, the, um, that portion of amendment is intended to, to allude to, um, the, the tip of the iceberg of a conversation that needs to happen. And not to say that I'm not interested in those as well. And so, um, I think potentially tweaking the language to, to give a thought to that further conversation that probably can't happen in its entirety before we take action on memo 73, but again, alluding to budget conversations, um, and the conversations with charter programs, should the board approve this memorandum, it'd make a ton of sense. Um, so I'm happy to connect to offline members to tweak and improve, um, the memorandum, to discuss kind of common sense additions. Um, ahead of the meeting, I don't think there's a need to, uh, make sausage, um, from scratch live during a school working. I'm happy to do that offline. Appreciate that. Member Lefferts.
Um, if I may continue, um, this is not directly related to Member Jacob's proposals. Um, but one of the, and I think I spoke to this at our Saturday work session, um, but one of the things that I'm considering, uh, perhaps particularly in light of the governor's, uh, press conference today, which I have heard hearsay, uh, maybe flat funded, uh, education would be flat funded. Um, right now, the board has no idea, no ability to divine the intentions of the 34th legislature. They have not yet gavelled in. Um, however, there is a window of time between when they begin their work in January and our second meeting in February, where something could take place. Um, and the BSA or other levers could be meaningfully adjusted. And so I am considering an amendment that would say effectively if the base student allocation is statutorily adjusted for inflation since FY11, and if additional legislation is passed, which would adjust the BSA to account for inflation on an annual basis prior to our second meeting in February. I think, I think that's a game changer. The amendment would say if those things happen, uh, the board would reconsider any authorization granted in passage of memo 073. Um, and we would need a certain information from the administration. What does a budget for, for school number one look like? Uh, if we propose that it was closed December 17th, but something happens, you know, February 1st, by that second meeting in February, um, it would be nice to see what the budget for that school might look like. And a big part of my rationale is, um, I believe that a FY11, a, a BSA that's adjusted for inflation from FY, for FY11, um, would allow us to predictably hire enough educators to reduce class sizes in, especially in those really elementary grades and deal with the fact that PTRs have increased over time. And so all of a sudden that changes our building utilization, doesn't necessarily change the number of students in a class, um, I mean, in a school, but it may change from having one classroom of kindergartners to two classrooms of kindergartners. And one classroom of first graders to two classrooms of first graders. So all of a sudden that may change how the buildings are proposed to be utilized. So that just, if these things happen in a timely fashion in June, oh, I would be interested in making sure that we would have a known time and place to review any authorization that was granted, um, by this passage. Uh, it's, it's a bit of a carrot, if you will, but, um, I think it's a necessary one, because I do think it's pertinent new information at relevant to the FY26 budget. Um, I think that another potential amendment.
One, uh, do you want to pause?
Oh, sure. Yes.
Back on that. Okay. So any conversation or questions or perspective on amendment which would ask the board and carve out a, um, a rollback provision essentially should the legislature drastically and dramatically, it sounds like, um, increase education funding in 34th, the first half of the 34th legislature?
Just to ask a quick clarifying question, um, is the intended to be amendment that the legislature would pass a BSA bill equivalent to about $1,900 and the governor signed it?
Oh, um, uh, well, I guess it would need to, I would want to be certain of it. So I think it needs to be, uh, either a veto proof majority, uh, passes it or, um, or, or, I mean, I guess I haven't thought all the way through, but I think it's a great question.
Great question. Um, Member Higgins?
I'll just say, if, no, I requested earlier and I don't, I don't have it off the hand, but we've asked it with the impact of the capacity. And I'm giving that earlier, I think, uh, the James Center body that.
Last fall, last fall.
Yeah, last fall. So that gives us at least a perspective, but then completely because we got sixth grade now moved out. But it gives us pretty good perspective of how dramatic it would change. And that makes it a little space as well, um, then.
I think, uh, one other kind of just thought bubble around this topic. Um, if we were to pass an amendment like this,
we're also essentially, um, forecasting what board members would want to use the BSA for. Um, one thing I want to flag is that we have two outstanding contracts that still need to be negotiated. That could limit our capacity to do something like decreasing PTR, because we'll need to make sure we can make the payroll for whatever those unsubtle contracts amount to, just to leave the thought.
I'm going to jump in, then we'll go back to Member Higgins, and then we'll go to Mr. Anderson. Um, one of the, just in a conceptual fashion, I, I'll say that, um, if we're going to carve out a, a plan to consider walking back, uh, a, a plan to reduce our footprint at the elementary level, I would hope it's not purely attached to an allocation of resources to public education, but a broader long-term fiscal plan at the state level. Um, why we're losing, um, residents year over year without migration and a third of our young people are, are fleeing to the lower 48, um, really is a byproduct of, of a, a couple of different things, not to, not limited to our lack of a long-term fiscal plan as a state or over reliance on the volatility of oil prices. Um, our lack of, uh, one of the worst retirement, uh, options for public employee and teachers in the nation, um, the lack of affordable housing and childcare, um, in major urban areas. And so um, allocating money to public education is certainly one fix of a multi-pronged solution that really our legislature has been trying to work on and has failed year over year to implement, um, in conjunction with our governor, but it, it is not the, um, silver bullet to bring back, um, 30% of our young people and keep them here. Um, and not to mention attract the necessary professionals we need from the lower 48, because the University of Alaska system can't produce enough certificated teachers at this point. So, um, I, I do agree that it would make sense to revisit if the legislature takes a, a certain course of action. But I think it goes beyond education funding. We need them to have a vision for the future of our state, which they have not been able to implement over the last decade. Um, Mr. Anderson, then we'll go to Member Higgins.
So I, I think, I think what we're going to see in February is the governor's education bill will come out really early. Um, and it probably likely is going to have a different number than what the Senate and House Education Committee has come out with, and theirs in February. And so I, I just, you know, I, I think, I think it's going to take more than four weeks for them to come from the governor's bill, um, to them and try to find compromise. He talked about that a little bit in his press conference. Um, and he mentioned how great the charter schools were, how great homeschool was. And then he went straight into, I'll come up with an education bill and then we'll have to work our way, um, through the legislature and come to an agreement. But he, he did imply that he is, he is going to want the state control of new charter schools and things like that, because he still feels, uh, or believes that that's, um, a component of a strong future state education system. So I mean, however it's written, I think realistically, it, it, it doesn't appear that those, all three of those tripod legs are all in sync right now.
Yeah, fair enough.
Member Higgins?
If you reference towards the compensation being part of the factor with the money, I think the link hand in hand, we're not going to be able to recruit and retain teachers. And once we use money that we get in for lower classroom charge, it can't be dedicated to that. We don't hire people. I made a comment, um, uh, in community council, I said, look, it, we've got a really complex issue, even if, you know, we still have to be able to hire people. If we can't do that with the implementation of UAA showing so far behind, and then define benefit on top of it is a nightmare. I, I, here we call, the governor making a comment at the senator saying he's going to cut the school district, he wants the money to go to choice schools and multiple. And so this has been consistent with what he has been saying over and over again, but it's really the legislature that's going to decide. So I, I don't think we can counter anything, but I think contingency is putting, uh, the, the, the lesson same, it seems to be, hopefully, to, to let people know where we stand and where we want to go.
Put myself in the queue just really quickly to say that I'm in line with your vision, uh, for the conceptual additional language. I think it could still be crafted in a way that alludes to that rightsizing won't be just a one-year conversation for ASD. And so, but those fixes could address potentially future years of rightsizing. Um, I know that the, the report on 2050 analysis for our population, um, didn't forecast strong, um, results in terms of migration trends. So, um, yeah, leave it there. Member Lefferts?
Yeah, thank you. And I will happy to leave in just a little bit, um, to elementary school kids out at 2:30. Um, so I have two potential separate amendments. One of them would remove one of the named elementary schools on the list. If that were to be approved, um, you need to change the recommendation from four to three to sort of corresponding language. Um, but if that were to move forward, then a second amendment would be, uh, would involve, uh, would essentially say that given that the administration removed three schools from the initial rightsizing recommendation, and perhaps the board removed a fourth. Um, and the reality that the district may still need to be optimally consolidated to provide educational services to students. Um, that this amendment would also say that, uh, the superintendent would recommend no less than three additional schools, um, sort of in the fall of 2025 or FY, um, for the 26, 27 school year. So we'd be revisiting the consolidation conversation, um, that we would be, it would be focused on reducing combination classes at the elementary level, um, improving secondary students' course offerings or access to secondary, access to course offerings at secondary levels, um, improving the district efficiency. Um, and, and just to clarify that, uh, maybe reflecting on the rightsizing rubric, that the guidance to leave special programs intact would not this time preclude, um, the movement of one or more special programs or even existing charter schools to alternative locations. Um, if doing so would ensure the continuation of the special program and maybe facilitate the expansion of students served by the charter. So it's essentially, and I, and I will, I will be blunt. When I look at the neighborhood side of things, um, in, um, the schools that are. um, in, um, the schools that are proposed this year, as well as some other schools where there's a neighborhood and special program, um, it's, it's those kids on the neighborhood side of special program schools who I think were, in some cases, um, not serving through this particular right sizing rubric. I mean, I can think of eight kindergartners on the neighborhood side of one special program and eleven first graders on the neighborhood side of that same special program. And I think moving forward that those kids are going to be in combination classes their entire elementary career unless something changes. And so I just, I wonder whether we need special programs around so that they can still have access to those programs, but that the neighborhood students are ultimately better served, um, in that process. And so this year, I'm sort of discussing bigger conceptual amendments that of course will take time and reflection. Um, but I at least wanted to air some of my thinking, um, into the special needs. So I think, thank you for that opportunity, Mr. Anderson.
I think my only comment is when the district comes out to close schools, it's all-consuming for the senior, uh, staff and and, and the board in many cases, and doing it every year, um, really takes a lot of the focus away from the first semester. Even doing it every two years, this year was still, um, really very much all-consuming and emotional for the entire community, however Tuesday night turns out. I'm, I'm strongly supportive of starting every school year with which schools we're going to close as opposed to how we're going to focus on education and letting an entire school year, at least every other year, focus on students instead of adults, which is really why closures end up being in the community is discussions. But that's, I mean, obviously four votes, I'm all in, but, um, it, it takes a lot out of the, out of everybody and not just the staff. It's, it takes a lot out of everybody if, if that's in every year, I think.
I just have a clarifying question on Mr. Anderson. So I, I don't, I don't dispute any of that. I think the, the administration originally proposed a three-year closure plan, which I think had the board approved, um, without any modification. I, I think it's fair to say that there would be some in the community who review each year as an entirely separate discussion, despite what the board passed initially. Is, is there any way to mitigate some of the starting from the bottom of the hill at this year while still looking at potentially including a second year, whether it be in year two or year three? Does that make, does that make sense?
Uh, we haven't started the analysis on the next round and I just, I don't know when we, I mean, this has been six straight months of community discussions and involvement, really, really three, if you want to talk the whole community. Um, I mean, I honestly, if it's, I, I just think at some point, it, it, it certainly does take your most senior leaders' focus for the, for the whole first semester out, at least much of it. And that, that's my, that's my concern. I've been through this twice now. Everyone in this room has been through this twice. We, we know exactly how all-consuming it is. And I think this past fall, I was grateful that I had one year, um, to focus on everything from snow equipment to all the other things that fall underneath me that I should be looking at, all of those other systems for efficiencies and, and, and I'll be honest, um, for several of us, we have not been looking at those the last few months. It's really been ninety percent right sizing, ten percent everything else. And, and, and so there's, there's a, a cost to efficiency of operations if every year that's your focus for half the school year.
And you, just to clarify that, do you think that would have been different if the board in one year approved a three-year plan?
It, it depends. If there was any belief that approving a three-year plan would automatically mean it could never be repealed, then a three-year plan has benefits. But if you pass a three-year plan and then every year you get to review whether the original passage, because every April, there's potential for new board members who did not approve of that original plan. And that's what I've seen talking to C O Os in the lower forty-eight is on these multi-year ones, that's exactly what happens. By year two, there's three new board members who don't feel obligated, um, to comply with a prior approval. And so it's really hit or miss in the lower forty-eight is whether it actually happens.
Appreciate that.
Well, I, I liked your approach recently where they went out with bond if, I mean, with the budget issue and asking people what we should do and all that. To me, that focus on a better process because it talks about this is the problem, these are the options. Now, when we talk about the selection, we kind of bypass that by saying the selection is what you want to do when they're saying what are the other options out there? And we didn't, we never had that discussion. I don't think we're talking about this is the problem. Let's, let's play it out, see the budget, these are the options and this is the selection. And then hear from them what they say. I'd rather have another selection. And that's what I think is missing. I think this is going to go a long way to say the problem is funding. People will agree with it. It's not just a, a ease of administration. It's not just the A, B, or C. It's all of that that's going to be out there. So, um, I appreciate when, you know, member lessons makes reference about what if we get additional funds, things like that. Cause that plays into that budget as well. Somewhere along this line, we've jumped to this is the conclusion we want without selling what the options were and, and having the public buy in that those options are important to them as well. Have all the surveys come back? Every time I see them, surveys for teachers come back pretty hot. For the school is lower, for A S, for the, the district is lower than for the education in country, it's a very bottom. The thing they know most is what gets the highest rating and we're tacking with, and with rating. So I'm just, that's my concern. I just, I'd like the idea of the discussion now about what the options are, whether then what's in the, the public that doesn't want school closures, that this is the solution.
Uh, member Alman.
Um, I appreciate some feedback, um, because I think even if we had closed all the schools in our right, then it was going to be a temporary thing and we'd be back at it. Um, and, and it is a problem when it's so many schools and we're so spread out, they aren't large district. If the administration was tasked with choosing one school a year for the indefinite future, because unless something changes in Alaska, I don't see this problem being solved. Is that significantly less of a burden administratively? Cause I, I do get what you're saying. It's been a lot of time, first of all, just getting a small list and, and then doing the further research into whether or not there are things we don't know and all that. Um, as a board member who's supposed to vote on Tuesday night, I, I haven't had a chance to go to Eagle River yet. And there, it, it has been a lot to absorb in a relatively small amount of time. If it was one school, I, I want to have a feeling we would probably be able to come up with a good candidate each year, um, that might be less controversial and still going to be a lot to the people affected by it. But, but this is going to be something we deal with every couple of years for quite some time until something changes. I was just wondering if that, if that would be easier, more manageable or there are pitfalls? I, I do see what you're saying. If we passed a three-year plan, absolutely, I think it'd be some people's campaign to, to get on the school board to change it. And so it would get retried every year anyway. Uh, I don't know if this is better or not.
Yeah, I, I, I think a smaller number is easier than trying to fix the problem and one fell swoop.
I could see that working, but I would need some assurance that the school board is interested in exploring additional schools over multiple years. That we could certainly do the work, but I think part of us just wants to understand where the board falls on the topic of school closures. Right? If there's no interest in doing it, let's say on Tuesday night or next year with one school, at what point do we stop or change course? That would be my only concern.
It could easily go back to the Caro Como days of every year when we were doing pink slips, talking about cutting hockey. I mean, if the board's not really serious about it, then, then, well, I mean, it happened like multiple years in a row. Oh, we may have to cut hockey and, or, or other sports. If the board's really not committed, it's just something where the public at some point, um, becomes a little jaded.
Yeah, I see it being, I can follow. I, I see it being driven by the need. Um, and I have looked at the spreadsheet that member Lawson's had where we've got an elementary school that doesn't have enough kids for a grade level class at any grade level. And, and in the foreseeable future, won't. Um, as a board member, if that was the only thing we were going to be voting on, I think it would be a slam dunk and I absolutely do get the need. Um, but yeah, it's, it's a swirl of schools with really different issues and impacts closing that just makes it a lot for the public to absorb, uh, at one time. Makes a lot for the board to absorb at one time. I, I think we do have to do it. And the real question is what, what is the way where we do it as cleanly with this little trial?
Yeah.
And without soaking up all the administrative resources in the district every year. Um, as a board, it'd be a problem. It'd take too much longer. But that's just me and Dave.
So I'll, I'll turn on the issues. Well, I think, um, if, if the board chooses to adopt, um, memorandum seventy-three on Tuesday, um, with changes or even with a minor change, I, I think that the board will have to and, and owes our community an answer for how we achieve equity in the right sizing process, given we've, um, the administration took programs from different parts of town off the list. And we have, we still have excess capacity, um, in areas of town that are no longer part of the right sizing plan. To me, the job won't be finished if the board adopts a right sizing plan that doesn't include excess capacity in all parts of our municipality. And so I feel like it's a natural pairing as to how we have that conversation. I admit that I'm not the one doing the bulk of the work. Um, and so I, I think that probably should be a collaborative effort as, uh, as President Alman was alluding to. But I, I, I don't know that I'm comfortable with, um, addressing issues of our capacity only in West Anchorage, East Anchorage, Eagle River, but leaving midtown and South Anchorage unaddressed. And then not having any ideas to remain, we'll circle back to that conversation. Um, I think that message changes and I could, your community deserves to have that full context. Um, so I'll say that. Uh, with that said, I think it was a great conversation. Hopefully that was helpful. I know member Listens had to leave. And so I assume her, um, amendments will come forward. I, I, President Alman, I guess, uh, with just one piece of, from a governance perspective, at some point, I think we may wish to have an amendment deadline, um, for memo seventy-three, um, so those, uh, any amendments can be published by Saturday. Um, there is at different levels of governance, the municipality or at the state legislative level, they, at some point, a point of no return where everything's on the table in terms of what's going to be considered. So we can have the most meaningful testimony possible leading up to Tuesday. Um, if there are amendments introduced on the floor which have had not any, a, a very limited opportunity for review, um, that, that haven't been posted publicly, I think that's, I think we can do better than that. And I think that there shouldn't be a problem, given the board's been looking at the same data set for quite some time to ask for an amendment deadline. And so I would ask that we consider setting Saturday morning, um, when our agenda goes live and as the deadline for any amendments to be considered. Um, and then, you know, there need to be modifications or language workshop being from there. I think that'd be appropriate. But broad strokes, I think we want to consider that. Um, with that said, uh, Ms. Grant, do we have any other members online that have raised their hand or joined us since we started?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, we'll go to Mr. Ace.
I have two questions about the bullets, about the memo. I guess the first one, I see that Tutor is going to go K six instead of K five. Have we, I don't know, I, does anybody in here know how many at Denali actually chose to stay? Every sixth graders choose to stay versus going on to middle school?
Yeah, I think that's a good.
Do that significantly.
If, if the board doesn't mind me, um, kind of bringing some information to the table on sixth grade. Um, there, the, the sixth grade question at Tutor, um, I think it's a valid one. Um, there, both Denali and Aquarian Charter have opted to stay K six, um, this year, um, even though we've moved most of our district to sixth grade at middle school. Um, Aquarian is actually getting ready to come to the board with a memo to request to go to K five because of, um, kind of dwindling sixth grade population. Um, Denali has not made any moves that direction, but they are noticing similar drop in enrollment in sixth grade as well. Um, at Montessori, it is a little bit more flexible because there are multi-age classrooms to absorb that. But it's just food for thought around that part of it.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. I see that being a totally crazy moving forward. And then the second one is, um, are we not considering a childcare facility at one of our closing facilities?
So I'll, I can address, I think, both of those, um, I'll take a stab at. Though the first, um, my language regarding the Tutor Elementary Montessori program specifically would only apply to the Montessori program and is driven apart from conversations I've had with the parents of the Montessori program. Um, they value their parents, families being given a choice to remain in the program to sixth grade, recognizing that it is effectively a combination classroom, um, this is, I understand it with. Fair enough, yeah. Um, and so, um, there, there wouldn't be where we would have to allocate, um, additional staff and the program at Tutor, as I understand, could especially use the enrollment, um, at least short term. And so I think it's, um, there won't have to be much, um, staffing realignment and there will be minimal impact besides the families choose to utilize that option. It's really just a, a very little downside choice to those families. It isn't being driven by, um, myself as a board member. I don't, I haven't had any student in the Montessori program, either Tutor or Denali, uh, simply a request that was made, um, going back to the decision by the district to actually pull sixth grade out beforehand, a, a call for equity between Denali and Tutor. So I think it's for a chance while we're, um, while the roof is off, so to speak, to part our capital planning project language again, um, to make a slight tweak to provide, um, equity in, in a program and then also make some parents pretty happy from what I understand. Um, I believe the Montessori P T A side of Tutor specifically had a meeting, they had a conversation. They sounded generally in favor of this proposal, again, with little downside. Appreciate that. Um, the second, I'll speak to the, the plan, which I think right now is pretty clear from administration. Um, there, there isn't a concept that's proposing right now childcare to coexist, to be co-located in a facility. But I, the board is very passionate about addressing this and my hope is that in the near future, we can begin a conversation as to the intersection of excess capacity in our buildings at the elementary level specifically and, uh, opportunities to collaborate with community partners to provide that space. Um, but I, I'll speak as a board member, not having to do the work. I'll say that even I'm running against bandwidth limits as to how many questions I can ask administration as to what they can do. Um, so I can't imagine where their bandwidth is at, but it, it is something I anticipate us addressing as a district soon, um, at least from the board level. And then, Mr. Anderson, if you have a.
I think you're going to see that when we talk about the repurposing of the schools. We're also going to bring up repurposing questions of schools. Um, obviously I, I have been talking to people, um, not about school closures, but in, in the childcare world. And I think that, that we'll be ready, um, in the second semester to come forward with some potential options uh, that would help provide a, a valuable resource for, uh, our, our staff and in some cases the community, uh, within our schools. And as you would expect, it would, it would be something that would have to grow over multiple years. A lot of people across Anchorage are already in leases they can't get out of. I mean, there's lots of reasons. Plus there's a workforce shortage in Anchorage at almost every single level. Um, but I think that, that the board will be pleased to see that we will have a plan to have something moving forward sooner rather than later.
And I, and I guess for clarity purposes, how I view the conversation of childcare and the intersection with excess capacity is it will help alleviate and mitigate potentially future rightsizing conversations, but it does not negate the need to revisit the items in memorandum seventy-three as listed right now. And this is a yes and solution. Um, and so that's how I view it. Um, President Alman and then we'll go to member Higgins.
Um, I was just going to touch back to your, um, suggestion about a deadline. We know that I'm in a deadline. Um, I'm thinking if somebody did something to matter, say like add a school to the closure list, that would be an unnoticed action, even though we're considering closures as such a significant change. Um, but somebody just wants to do like to say works, nothing or technical adjustments. That could be done, I don't know if that's sufficient, uh, to achieve what you're asking about. But that, that's my inclination because we don't normally have a deadline for that.
Agreed. And I, I think it's just, I, I think it would be the board engaging in additional transparency. Agreed. And I, I think it's just, I, I think it would be the board engaging in additional transparency and just good governance of saying as many amendments as we anticipate bringing forward, um, we should be posting ahead of time. Again, this is not as suppressed as we've been talking about this at the start of the school year um in some form or fashion. Really, we need, we're going to be revisiting this topic the last time we talked about right sizing. Um, I think that there would be an opportunity for board members to get their amendments publicly noticed. And then if there's additional amendments, we really would want to carefully analyze as to why they weren't posted previously. And if it is really just wordsmithing or if something isn't timely any longer, um, we should be justifying why we waited until just the last second to bring something up without proper notice. Because again, like I questioned, were we able to get community feedback on those amendments? Um, that's kind of my concern. So and I'll just say for my part, I'll be, I'll be laser focused on better understanding why if someone didn't. We have multiple opportunities. We've got a Saturday work session, we've got a governance meeting. If, if I'm not aware of an amendment that gets brought up at our business meetings or a topic that is so heavily been discussed, I'm going to want to know why. And I hope the rest of the board will too. Um, Ms. Grant?
I just wanted to let you know that member lessons is online. No hands raised, but
Great, okay. Yeah, thank you, member lessons, for joining us online. We'll go to member Higgins. Oh, sure, yeah. Do you have, so you don't have a comment on right sizing?
Uh, on my side, I'm, I'm not just making a comment in general about this. The Tudor Elementary came up before and I know that they want to keep everybody the same and that was an issue, so it wasn't considered. I don't know if there's any other schools that follow in that category that have the same concerns, but you're right. Montessori is a different scenario. It's four, five, six in the same grade and it disrupts the, the plan of what they wanted to do. I know the staff, the, the parents, they were looking at trying to come forward with even a charter to make it a K to eight. Uh, and so that they wouldn't be held back by the administration. So I think this is a good move if we did that. I appreciate that. Uh, and, and I, I totally agree with the, trying to do something to provide more access to these various optional programs that we have in our guardrails. I mean, the guardrail, we've got to look at each one. We don't, we're not meeting them. Instead, we're not going to operate without a plan that does that, without a plan. So um we need to have an honest discussion. Are these guardrails valid? Are they achievable? And if they aren't, then we need to say, we need to have that discussion because I think three of the four guardrails are not being met. And, and so I think we need to have a discussion, be honest about it.
Appreciate them, Mr. Higgins. I'll also say that from my, uh, my perspective, some of the leaderships around guardrails needs to come from us, which I think is part of the reason why I'm proposing this. I think pretty significant and, and, and um noteworthy amendment regarding charter school transportation. This um, I, I, I've made a point to connect with, with leaders of charter schools that have contacted the board and um I, I think this really hasn't been considered previously. And so I think it's on us to think outside of the box too, since these are on guardrails, but I appreciate the sentiment. Uh, Dr. Bryant?
And if I could just comment, I agree, member Higgins, we need to make some movement on the guardrail. But I would be remiss if I didn't point out that we do prepare a report to the board, the outlines, the progress that we've made on application rates specifically for charter schools. And in the most recent report, you'll see that we're actually on target. Number two, we've decided to put as part of the repurposing plan potentially charter schools and buildings that are closed with the idea being that if the charter school is in a neighborhood school that has kitchen facilities and is more walkable for families, that's a step in the right direction. And then number three, we're supportive of aspects of what member Jacobs is uh supporting via the amendment. It should be adding transportation opportunities for students, something that logistically will be ambitious to pull up, but I'm committed to working with the board to make that happen. So I just want to clarify, we're making positive movement towards the guardrails. They're not going unaddressed, but there's a lot more that we can do and I'm excited to do that.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. Um, is there other conversation on right sizing, um, questions for administration? Conversation on amendments that have either been proposed or conceptual at this point? Okay, hearing, seeing none. Uh, our upcoming meetings for governance include January thirty, twenty twenty five and February thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Um, if there is no other business for our governance committee meeting, I will and, Mr. Higgins?
Yeah, I want to make sure that we, that we include items on those meetings. One of those is the uh submission of requests for information to the superintendent. On a recent event, I tried to, was going to talk to someone about information. Superintendent advised me I had to go follow that process. When I said I'm not looking for a report or anything else, it's just questions, I'm told I still have to go through superintendent. I don't, and it says that's my policy requirement as he interprets it. So I'm not going to be prepared with the questions I would have had on coming up right sizing that had a question. He knows that's what it was talking about. He included an email and said that I don't know of any other school board members that's being told you can't talk to people till you get submitted to the superintendent and that that policy is being done that way. Just from a history standpoint, when I got on school board originally, you were expected to spend, you were assigned a department to learn that department. Everybody got a different one. Then we moved forward, well, we had a request come through that was rather time intensive of academic data we wanted to gather. Superintendent said we tossed a lot of money, so they went through the process of saying it is to be submitted and approved. It didn't get approved because of the cost. When that superintendent left, one month later, we found out all that information was available all the time. It was rolled out to everybody and we had three years worth immediately. So there's been a process here making it difficult to get information. This is a new barrier that surprises me. And I think that if we have that kind of thing, the president of the board gets involved in interpretation, not the superintendent on board policy. But I, it, it is a, it is a concern. I think we need to include that item on the next one and I'll bring it up in the board meeting on Tuesday as well.
Yeah, sure. Sounds great, member Higgins. Um, President Hallman can decide if he wants to talk about um our RFI process and how to best um get information as a board member, either at a retreat or during governance. Um, I'll leave that up to him. Appreciate your points. Um, if there's no other conversation, we'll adjourn our governance meeting at two twenty three PM. Thank you.